Yo. Anybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sorry for that. I don't know what exactly happened, but I'm glad to be here and I apologize for the delay. Let me scroll over here. Okay, so I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. I don't think Mays has joined yet, has he? No. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Very good. As a reminder for our participants on the board, since we are audio only, when you do make a motion or a vote or a second, just let me know your names and and we're going to do a voice count for the eyes and we will do a, an option for anybody who wants to vote against to do so verbally instead of getting to see your pretty faces. Okay. And Mr. Beavers, I think you'd volunteer to do our invocation today?
We'll do that. Yes, sir. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and it's time that we can come together, Lord, and just serve our community. Father, we thank you so much for all the new and different things that we've seen in the past few months, Lord, from students learning in new ways to teachers and administrators doing an amazing job and a new way of doing their job. Lord, we also pray for healing for our friends that are sick right now and also members of our community that have endured financial hardships. Father, we also pray for safety for our community as it heads out this summer. Lord, we pray that you would bring them back safely to us in the fall. And Lord, lastly, we ask for wisdom tonight as we make decisions that will affect our district. Pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. We will now do a virtual pledge of allegiance. You will virtually put your hand or actually put your hand over your heart, stand up and.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
The wisdom stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's a always an interesting development to do remotely. Dr. Watkins, we do have a public comment now, is that right?
Yes, sir. If you want to do your talk and then we'll introduce him.
I will do that. It's just, just the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We now move to the public comment session of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who have completed public comment cards this evening, which are accepted from 6:30 PM to 7:00 PM and are not transferable to other speakers. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is not an endorsement of the information shared by the presenter and solely provides the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Thirty minutes have been allocated for public comment. I don't think we'll need that. But usually, here it is, three minutes per speaker. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance proceedings, procedures provided in Board Policies DGBA Local, FNG Local, and GF Local. Each grievance procedure allows for an individual to redress grievances with the Board of Trustees. Additionally, if there are four, five or more individuals that would like to speak on the same topic, you may choose to appoint an individual to speak on behalf of the group as provided in Board Policy BED Local. And finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda. So for the gentlemen speaking tonight, it, one of the most important thing to take away from there is that we have an ability to hear you make your, your statement and bring the whatever topic you want to put in front of the board, but since that's not been put on our agenda, we don't have an opportunity to enter into a dialogue. So don't take our silence or reluctance to engage to be a lack of interest or anything other than the fact that we by law can't speak about things that haven't been posted on the public agenda. And with that, I will invite our guest speaker to speak.
I'm sorry, I think I was muted. Can everybody hear me okay?
I hear you now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Jim Toll. My family and I have been residents of the district for approximately 12 years. And first of all, let me just express that this is very difficult that, to do as the relationships as I and my family have cultivated over the years have been vital and very enduring to us. But tonight, I'm solely here in defense of my daughter and the decision she made based off the facts that she, that were known to her at the time by the district of choosing Prosper versus Rock Hill High School. The facts were, as you know, that the incoming junior class last year was allotted the ability to choose which high school they wanted to attend regardless of zoning lines. My daughter chose Rock Hill, not because it was her school of choice, but because it was a decision made with her teammates involved. It was an informed decision. It was a passionate decision. It was a tearful decision because the underclassmen that are part of this team were locked in and zoned in at Rock Hill. Thus, making her, her decision to go to Rock Hill come to fruition. Those facts were subsequently changed by the district without consideration to the decision already made by her as they allowed those underclassmen, speaking of the sophomores going to be juniors, to pick a school as well. Well, everybody wanted to stay at Prosper High School because of the support group there, the coaches, the teachers, and whatnot. However, when they made that decision known to the sophomores, my daughter was already locked in and could not readdress that issue at no fault of her own. We have made a petition to the district. I have submitted information and requests which have been declined. And it is mis, unfortunate and disheartening at, at, at least, but it's prejudicial because this was a misleading direction that the district went and the seniors, who are incoming seniors, will not be able to make that choice again without any type of recourse. My daughter made a choice, not on a selfish ambition, but a calculated decision to be part of a team and a team together. She didn't make one because she was indecisive or reckless. This was weighted heavily on a decision, a mature decision by her team and by her structure. She knows she's going to get great academics at either school that she goes to, but she chose to stay with her team versus her own desire of being at PHS. Additionally, and not because of this, but she developed a medical condition that she is now being treated and, and under care by the Windhaven Adolescent in Sports Medicine Clinic. She is being seen by an expert in sports medicine. She's being treated. And part of her recovery is that she has an established support group. This support group, when we brought it to her, to the doctor's attention, was very alarmed when she found out that she was locked in at a school that didn't have that support group that she needed, her team, her coach, her, her, her choice of counselors and whatnot. So because it was very alarming to her, she then subsequently wrote a memo to the district expressing her request and in her professional opinion how this would be very vital to her recovery in this period, which has been submitted to the, the board, which was declined as, as my, my understanding. Therefore, I'm addressing the, or excuse me, to the district. Therefore, I'm addressing the board tonight to at least discuss this at length and to, at a minimum, weigh this against our strategic plan that the students are first in all decisions. And that evaluate, in valuing the students and their success, this has to be addressed at an individual level. I know there was some missteps here, but I'm asking you that the, the district make a change and decide to, how to handle this. It may be that the recourse is, is that we need to allow the students who are addressing this issue be allotted that time to make that choice and that difference because of what happened earlier in the year. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time and the ability to speak to you today. And I implore you to at least consider this matter with the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toll. I appreciate you bringing that to concern, to our attention. And we will, we will, we will have conversations to, to learn more on our end, but can't make any promises about action on our part or anything other than we thank you for, for what you brought to us. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Back to, so that ends open forum. So we're moving now into the area of consent agenda.
Only thing, let's see here. Just want to draw everybody's attention to this. Normally, you know, we have them up at the board meeting.
Right.
This year's retirees. And you can see the, the list of them there. The first, the first number is how many years they've served in Prosper. And the second number, how many years overall for this group? It's 89 years in Prosper cumulative and 170 years in education. It's just always, it's always impressive how much everyone, people give of their life to, you know, education and so many students over the course of their careers and, and teachers and staff. And just want to wish you could be in person with them to shake their hand and hug their neck and, and everything, but didn't want this to get in the way of at least acknowledging them for their service to Prosper and, and education overall in their career. So want to make sure we did that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's great. It's always a important time. And as we get bigger and bigger, just it's naturally, natural that this list gets longer every, every year, which is a shame to see so many good people leaving us, but after so much good service, it's just an, an honor and I hope they find great joy and satisfaction and rest in all that they do. And we're certainly grateful for their contribution. I would say that, let the record state that I'm going to protest, you know, Rusty leaving is one thing, but taking Anne with him is a totally different. I didn't realize that was going together.
Sure.
Good. Well, we'll certainly, we'll certainly miss all of those people.
Yes, sir. So moving into the consent agenda, we have the, the, the normal information. You have the minutes there from the previous meetings. You've had that in your packet, so I'm not going to delay on that unless you want me to go back on the minutes. You can see where we are on the enrollment, which is almost 3,040 kids over this time last year. That's crazy, it's reality.
Yeah. 3,040 kids. What is that? That's four elementary schools?
Well, if they're all elementary, yes, sir.
I think, I think of chunks of elementaries.
Yeah, that's, that's for sure. And then we get, speaking of schools, we get into the schools we have in progress right now. This is Sam Johnson Elementary being built over in Mustang Lakes, opening in the fall. Looking nice. For those that in the community that might be attending, eerily similar to all our other elementaries, the prototype. So the out, the entry might be a little bit different from other schools that we try to give it some uniqueness, but when you walk in the building, it's same.
Very nice.
Beautiful.
And we get into Rushing Middle School over there off of Fish Trap. No promises on that road. We will be prepared, I guess, to airlift students and teachers to that building. Here's a good aerial. If you think it looks just like Hayes, it isn't.
Raptors.
Nice.
And that's reptilian version.
Yes, right. First non-bird.
And then Rock Hill. Back to birds.
And we're still, we're still on for our, I think we have two consecutive Saturday ribbon cuttings?
Yes, sir. Right now, those are still in place based on Governor's press conference today and how he continues to open up the state. We don't think by the time that comes around in early August, if, that we're going to have any, any difficulties with those.
Good.
We're going to hold on to those states.
Beautiful.
Down below is the fueling station, transportation depot, if you will, on that site. We will end up having probably about four of those depots that we'll put at high school sites. So we can will be so, in the end, so built out that it just makes sense to have those scattered across the district to, for those buses to serve just that part of our district instead of running all over the place. And that is consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Any comments or concerns about that? Otherwise, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
It's Bill. I'll make a motion.
I heard Bill first. Deborah, do you want the second?
Sure.
All right. Deborah Smith, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes.
And making sure Mr. Davenport is still not online, I believe.
Yeah, I don't see him on.
This, these are some COVID-19 waivers. Got to take board action. The state has made it for districts to be able to do this since the year was, in some respect, for some of these requirements, cut short to be able to fulfill these requirements in the way they want. So they're basically waiving it, but it does require board action to actually send the waiver in. I recommend that you approve this in terms of the requirements for CPR instruction for the class of 2020. It's limited to the class of 2020.
All right.
This is Jan. I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
Thank you, Jan. I don't have a second. All right, Michelle. Great. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Here we have purchase and renewal of this subscription for elementary campuses. The ones that we have and the new one, Johnson, coming online. And that is for the rock bottom price of $121,380.75, up about $11,000 from previous year. It's the annual thing.
Right. I know we've all had a chance to look at this. Any questions about this for anybody?
No.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion for approval.
This is Jan. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase and renewal.
All right. Thank you, Jan. You have a second?
This is Kelly. I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then motion six B or, or agenda item six B passes.
This is another COVID-19 waiver involving instructional materials inventory for 2020.
It's just says we, we just can't count it or something. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Working with skeleton crew, getting a good count on all the inventory.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Deborah Smith and I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Deborah.
It's Bill. I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion or agenda item six C passes.
Ms. Fulmer, you're good to go on the financials.
Okay. Thank you. Let me get set up real quick. Okay, good evening. I just want to run through a brief overview of our cash position and expenditures compared to budget as of the April. Our weighted average yield of the portfolio through April 30th is 0.512%, which we see is a drop from March. And the general fund portfolio market value was $152 million, which represents almost 60% of the overall portfolio. These are the financial institutions where we, our investments in cash position with TechSpool being the largest at 51%. Again, just another look at the comparison of where we were year to date prior year. Have a 16% increase over this time last year. On our summary by funds, you see the bond funds is decreasing from this time last year as is expected. And the general fund is increased 31% overall. For operating revenue, we received $144 million year to date, which is a 21% increase over this time last year. We've collected revenue of $144 million. Percent completed compared to budget is 95.8%, which is a strong percentage compared to budget over this time last year at almost 91%. Current tax collections, if you look at our percent of the original levy, we are at 102.44% of collections compared to budget. Last year, we were at 107.7%. If we look real quickly at the rollback for year, this year's percentage of collections is stronger compared to budget than prior year with the ag rollback from February at 1.4 million. On the operating expenditures, we have $107 million expended year to date. In total expenditure comparison, if we just look at the pie charts here, the percent completed this year is right where we were last year at 67.83%. So we're tracking along very evenly with prior year. And the expenditures by function group is just another visual representation of the comparisons. Food service fund compared to budget, last year, net cash flow at this time was 417,000. This year, as you can see, it's 70,000 in the deficit. And service fund, year to date's collections and net cash flow were 21.3 million. And the athletic fund is a positive cash flow of $277,000 year to date. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer. You know, if you, we've seen those slides for so many years and they're always, always such a strong position. If you had to summarize anything for the board as a takeaway from, from those slides we just walked through, is there anything you'd want to make sure that we're aware of?
Our fiscal year end is August 31st and the food service performance we're monitoring. We do have the benefit as we get closer to opening school of those enrollments. The revenues coming in, so that will support it. Some districts that have a year end at June 30, it could be a different picture. But overall, we're still monitoring it. Enrollment was strong and was, we know our revenue is supported by our enrollment.
Right.
We're just in the process now.
The 240 fund food service being in deficit year to date, COVID-related?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. 100%. They were tracking along to have an expected profit before just the complete shutdown.
Yeah.
Good. Great. Well, great report, great results. Thank you very much. We need to, do we need to, we, yes, we need to approve the financial investment tax report. It's like my first time to ever do this. I need a motion for that, please.
This is Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Can I get a second?
This is Jan. I'll second.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone, well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then budget, I mean, agenda item seven A, the financial investment tax report has been approved. Great. No budget amendments?
I know, but I'm trying to figure out. Fulmer, I need you to unshare your.
Dr. Watkins, I'm not sure that's my screen.
Just talk amongst yourselves.
You give us a topic? No.
The Governor's press conference today said.
Yes.
All right, here we go. All right, now we're to capital projects or capital projects, capital equipment. This is not a small number. Each year, each year, I think we, you approved about 1.98 million this year. The request is for the 1.3 million. That's a number not to exceed. So if there's ways to whittle this down, we will work, continue to work with these departments to whittle that number down. If it goes over, then we'll come back to you guys. But the, this, this allows us to move forward and do what we need to do to secure this equipment.
Okay, well, we saw, all had the detail behind this in our packet. Any questions or concerns we need to address?
No, it's very straightforward.
Yeah.
Felt like.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to approve these, this capital equipment.
This is Jan and I'll make a motion that we accept the capital outlay requests not to exceed the total highlighted.
Great. Thank you, Jan. Get a second?
This is Kelly. I'll second.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
If you recall, last month, you did the GMP for elementary number 13. Now we're at 14. So for as close to 23 million as you can get.
Yeah.
And that is
Wow.
about an 800-ish, $1,000 difference from elementary 13. I'm sure Bradley has some great information about that. You got it, Dr. Bradley?
Yes, sir. I just, we had expected that this elementary would cost a little more and it is primarily due to the location, very similar to why Rushing costs a little more than Hayes. The soil over there in Windsong is, requires us to dig deeper piers and have more. And so we were expecting that this would cost a little more. There's also just some design things to match the Windsong look that, that increased the price just a little bit. It was interesting to see that some of the things, some of the line items are actually less in this. It was interesting to see that some of the things, some of the line items are actually less in this school, but that concrete cost of extra piers and piers going deeper. We have a sizable allowance in this job in case we have to case piers because of the wet spring we continue to have, that's a likely thing. So my hope is that at the end, it would not cost $800,000 more, but we have to build that allowance in there to, to be ready in case we do run into some issues with the 40-foot piers that we're gonna have to drill for this elementary.
Got it.
And to refresh everyone's memory, this, we're not in a position just yet to pull the trigger yet on 13 or this one. We're asking for approval on this, so we can pounce if, if we can, but we're still, you know, working with the values that we're receiving from the Collin County and Denton County Assessor's Office. And just again, to refresh everyone's memory, we have to grow anywhere from 1.25 to 1.5 billion, what's, would it be billion a year to us, for us to keep up in construction to match the student growth? And all our, although our preliminary was in that range, preliminary estimate from the county, the next level preliminary, which is the more real one, is about half that. So that means we're gonna have to make some tough decisions on, on what is next, if anything's next. And when I say next, opening in the fall of '21. So we'll continue to crunch those numbers, we'll continue to evaluate everything with Mr. Witt, our, our financial advisor with Sanco, and, and see what the most prudent step for us is along with what we can do. It's sort of the double whammy, now that oil is, has been crashing the last couple of months and COVID-19, the state's really not gonna have any money. And when they don't have money, we don't have money. It's, they're gonna figure out a way to, to cut school funding, and that will not necessarily be in place this next school year, because it's the second year of the biennium. But when they go back into session after, in January, they're absolutely gonna be talking about some serious cuts. And so even if our values come in and we can build, we also have to evaluate if we can staff. So those are our challenges that we're dealing with, and we'll continue to work through those and see what's, what the best, best next step is.
Cause the, the, the valuations have already come out for, from, and those are from January, right? And so are they just assuming that those are gonna get reset, or is that projection for next year?
The prelimi-, the very preliminary, the, the early projection from the county was, for Collin anyway, was around 1.3 billion.
Right.
The next one we got, which was, I wanna say the latter part of March and, and somewhere in that timeframe, maybe the first part of April, they came back with half that number.
Right.
So now, as, you know, they're also projecting more protests than they've ever had, you know, more than normal, anyway, given people's work situations and all that, so it's, it's not looking good. So that's not a prosper thing, it's gonna be an everywhere thing. But certainly with the velocity of our growth, like I told you, you know, we've grown over 3,000 students this year. It's, we have a, we have our, our next stuff, I think quarterly meeting with the demag for the latter part of this month. And we should have some updated projections on where it looks like now, they're, it's gonna be falling, so it might, it, I'd say it like this, but it wouldn't be a bad thing if the, if the projected growth numbers took a break as well and weren't at such a high velocity, but we'll just have to see how that is. There's such an inventory of homes and prosper that construction might slow a bit. There's still enough of an inventory for a lot of people to move into Prosper. So we'll just have to see how that plays out.
Got it. Okay, a lot to consider, but the matter before us is the GMP for elementary school number 14. Entertaining.
This is Bill, I'll make a motion as presented.
All right, thank you, Bill.
This is Deborah, I second the motion.
Thank you, Deborah, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will approve the GMP for elementary number 14.
Hey Jim, it's Mays, I'm here now.
Hey, Mays, glad you're with us, hear you had some car troubles, huh?
Just a little bit.
Sorry.
That's all right.
So on to item 7E, which is again, a modification to a local policy, and this is related as well. Can see there in terms of usually required each year, given the circumstances. Anyone who has any history of compromised health or anything like that will absolutely be required too, but no history of anything, it won't have the same requirement. So this, cause this attitude with that.
Good.
Hopefully with the governor's, hopefully his press conference today is, you know, the first step of more and more open, you know, open things with the state that could, you know, by the time school starts could be a very different story.
Yeah.
It's hard to, it's hard to gauge right now, so it's just, but this, again, it's another COVID-related adjustment.
All right, understood, need a motion for that, approval of that modification?
This is Jan, I'll make the approval of the new modification to the board policy.
Okay, Jan is making the motion, a second? All right, thank you, Michelle, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda item 7E passes.
This is just a, a part of the replacement plan, it's certain campuses, certain equipment throughout the, each year that's on rotation that Fernando and his team works out very well. So we sort of have an idea from one year to the next, what is time to move on? You know, as, as money gets tighter, this is one of those things that those schedules will have to be adjusted to, to where instead of going this many years, we're gonna have to tack another year or two on that.
Right.
Has a, has a price and manpower and effectiveness, because the older technology gets, they, they, they make it that way to where it goes, it becomes obsolete quicker, so you can spend more money. And so the older it gets, it becomes less reliable and requires more manpower to keep it up and running. Our teachers do a great job integrating technology into the classroom and everything that they're doing. That's because we have an amazing technology team that keeps everything working and the support for the teachers. The second, the equipment doesn't work, we will take some steps backwards. So I, I recommend we stay on the schedule as long as we can stay on the schedule. And so, again, this is a, just a, not a ridiculous number compared to the millions we've been doing. It's $219,365. I recommend the chip.
And we ask this every time, but we, we try to do something with getting some recompense from that, from the old stuff as we recycle it or do something. I know we've, yes, we've talked about that before.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, any thoughts or questions about the technology refresh at Reynolds? All right, then I will entertain a motion for agenda item 7F.
Jim, it's Mays, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mays, any second?
This is Jan, I'll second.
Thank you, Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Very good, 7F has passed. And now, we come to the time for executive session. So why don't I need a motion to go into executive session?
This is Deborah Smith, and I make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, Deborah, second?
It's Bill, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody wanna stick around and not go in? Hearing none, just for those that are on the call, we will go into executive session. Not sure how long that will be. But, but we will come back, there is a, I know, Dr. Watkins, there's been another, there's been a, we come back into this same venue or would be a different link? Separate link. Separate link, okay, so, so for those of you that wanna come back or, or see what happens when we come out of executive session, you can see the types of items that we typically do there, personnel approvals around resignations and new hires, conditional hires, that sort of thing. And, and the actions that we need to take on school sites, so we will go do that, and we will be back with you at some point in the future.
Okay, do I, we have everybody?
I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
Looks like everybody's here.
All right, so we were reconvening at eight 28.
Okay.
And so, we have the installation, possible action, approval of professional contracts personnel to be employed and status current professional personnel, including administrators. And a motion for new hires.
So a motion for eight A, which is the new hires, please?
This is Mays, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mays.
I'll second. Anna?
Oh, Jana beat you, Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight A passes. Eight B?
Is resignations.
Need a motion for those?
Deborah Smith, and I make a motion for the resignations.
Thank you, Deborah.
It's Bill, I'll second.
Thank you, Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, sir, sliding back up to G on possible land, future sites, and it's, I recommend authorizing me to finalize the purchase of a middle school site north side of Prosper Trail crossing Blue Star for 38.58 acres and the amount of $5.2 million, which is also accompanied by the education of an elementary school site in that sub-development, in that development as well.
Fabulous, need a motion for that? Thank you, Michelle, second?
This is Jan, I'll second.
Thank you, Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we've got another middle school site, seven G passes.
We've got one attendee on the screen, Mr. Wilburn, how you doing, sir? So just to let him know and anyone else listening later, that the hope is that the June meeting will be conducted normal, as a normal meeting in person, we will evaluate any restrictions on attendance based on what comes out of the governor's office, to be frank with you. But the hope is that we can have a, a more of a regular meeting in the month of June. And then, of course, this week, May 22nd is the last day for students. And we are still shooting for June 5th to be the graduation date for celebration for Prosper High School. If the weather is kind to us, I'd have to jump to June 6th, but we're at now, all efforts are shooting for June 5th, and June 15th is the next regular meeting.
Great. Okay, any other, any other words or wisdom before we bail out?
I think so.
All right. Look forward to seeing you all person in June.
Yes.
So thanks, everybody, for being on, I guess I need a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make the motion to close our meeting for tonight.
Second?
This is Kelly.
Kelly, you got beat by Mays, Mays, Mays wins, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not gonna even ask if anyone's opposed, so good night, everybody. Take care.